2005, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge to the citizens of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll call Mr. Libardum.
Mrs. Kowalski.
Present.
Mr. Sterlitz.
Present.
Mrs. Snyder.
Present.
Mr. Shaner.
Present.
Mrs. Hope.
Present.
Mrs. Ralph.
Present.
Dr. Alton.
Present.
Mrs. Millinger.
Present.
Mrs. Kama.
Present.
Okay, thank you. We will go on with our superintendent's report. Dr. Law.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going to start right out by having Jason Day come up and give us a construction update.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Law. Okay, so obviously the construction continues up at the intermediate school. So the latest information wanted to relay to the board and the administration. So the schedule update that the G C provided to us in July still showed the project finishing in December. It has gotten tighter, so some of the work has slowed. So we've asked the general contractor in his next schedule update through this month to provide kind of a backup plan on how he's going to get there to finish on time. We still think it can occur, but we've asked him for an action plan, so we hope to have that here within the next week or two. So work has continued, though. So Area A, where the classrooms are, ceiling grid continues through all the classroom ceilings. Painting has continued. Ceiling painting, the blackout painting up above the ceilings, has continued. The ceramic tile subcontractor has hit the site and started ceramic tile in the bathrooms in Area A, so that's a step toward getting the finishes. The flooring contractor, we had a pre-installation meeting with him about a week and a half ago. He slated to hopefully hit the site in early September to start flooring in Area A. Area B, the kitchen, concrete C M U walls are completed, and it's ready for the framing. So the framing contractor has gotten in there and started bulkheads and ceilings in that space. The flooring for that area is slated for sometime in September. The G C has informed us that the kitchen supplier has things lined up for the stainless steel counters and sinks for late October, and the rest of the equipment would be early November for that space. The new elevator in that area is slated to be installed in October. It's like a three to four-week install, so that's the date that they're telling us he'll be on-site to do that. The metal lockers for the hallways, the concrete bases for those are nearly complete, and that subcontractor should hit the site hopefully in early September to start putting metal lockers. Area C, the big part is basically the gym. They're actually starting to clear out the gym. The duck work has been 95% installed, so they're going to start painting the gym hopefully next week, once things get cleared out of the way. The roof, re-roof continues. They're probably 65-ish, 70% done with re-roof. That'll continue probably through this fall and get completed sometime in November. The mechanical and electrical contractors continue to perform as expected. They're ahead and kind of waiting for some finishes. So with the ceilings going in, they'll fall in behind with the lights, the registers and the grills. With the ceramic tile going in, the plumber will follow with plumbing fixtures and plumbing sinks, so that's starting to line up as we hoped. The electrical contractor, the switchgear, has been installed. He's been pulling the feeder wire to that. West Penn Power sent the new, set the new transformer a few weeks ago, so they're starting to really kind of prepare for permanent power for that building. They won't give us a date, but we anticipate here sometime in mid to early September that we'll have permanent power available. The mechanical contractor's starting to really line up when he's going to lift all those R T U units that have been sitting on the ground for a while up on the roof. The last discussion we had was here sometime in late September. So we're waiting for some more roof to be installed and the roof curbs to be roofed in so he could maximize the time the crane's on-site lifting those units in place. The site work, as you could see, the new lot is completely paved and restripped and ready for use for the district for this fall and school year. The new sidewalk has been poured over there and the concrete stairs that would lead up to that sidewalk. That will have a handrail, either the permanent one or a temporary one when school opens up for use. That's the kind of global project schedule update where we sit at this point. We'll continue to meet with the G C, you know, offer suggestions, follow-up on to-do lists and subcontractor arrival on-site, procurement of materials, so we can hit the end date for the project. Are there any questions related to the schedule, the progress of the work from anybody on the board?
When you talked about an action plan from the general contractor, can you explain more about that?
It would be like the crew sizes, if he's going to implement any overtime, stuff to that nature. Probably more importantly, the crew size that he can get on-site to perform the work. Also then to provide the list of anticipated deliveries of materials that have not hit the site yet. Your bleachers for both the gym and the, what's the space called? I guess the cafeteria area are here. There's been casework delivered on-site waiting to be installed, so there is product here on-site, so it would be sort of a plan of his installation of all those types of things.
Thank you.
You going?
Has the school been closed up now? Is it officially tight?
Yeah, yeah, they've been locking the doors.
I meant as far as the weather.
Oh, as far as weather, yeah. They, as you can see, they built all the temporary plastic in the windows, and the front canopy, they built a big wall and have that tempered in with plastic. So it is, it is weather-tight. Dawn told me this morning, I guess a little bit of rain got in from some roofing, but not nearly as much as it has since June. So they've come a long way since June to really tighten the building up.
Yeah, the reason why I'm asking this is because painting and all that can start once we get the building conditioned. Are the two units on top going to be wired for conditioning?
I don't think they're going to go that route. Long story short, there's a train units and they don't really function off a thermostat, so they function off another control feature that, and quite honestly, the train programmers can't hit the site for another couple of weeks. So I think Lyicarius is going to take a different route to condition the building.
Okay, and as soon as that starts, some work, additional workforce can occur inside the building, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I just had one more question. A meeting that I was at, there was an issue with windows coming in, like ordering them, getting them here, are they?
So the last delivery day, we've been told, was the end of September. That is a question we have to them, and they're following up with the window supplier. So we'll try to get you a better answer on that one here in the next week or two.
Thank you.
And the last meeting on that, it's, they're in production line, whatever that means.
Okay.
Okay, and I know they're trying to move it up into August if possible.
Right, right. Yeah, I think the earliest that they thought they could have them here would be literally in the next two weeks, the end of August. So he's trying to verify where in the production they are. Any other questions from any of the board?
Jason, just to clarify, these next two to three weeks are going to be critical in terms of getting, you know, getting, getting the building tightened up, getting it moving.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So we've seen some improvement over the last couple of weeks, like I mentioned, with the ceramic towel sub hitting the site. Ram, the interior sub, has added a couple more guys and restarted some ceilings. So as soon as they can get more, more men on-site, it should start to move quite a bit. So, yeah, the hope is now that the building's tight, like John said, they can really start to up the subcontractor crew size, and that's a race to the finish here. But we'll, like I said, we'll continue. We meet with them and talk to them daily. Dawn is constantly in communication with Nick and Peter Lyicarius on what we can do and what they can do to try to improve the progress of the, of the project. So pictures that are in the report are, at this point, fairly old. I mean, the front pretty much looks like that, the inside shot there. Duck work has been installed in that area. Scroll through. So that's an example of that blackout ceiling paint. They've been, started to do that in the corridors, so they could start to think about doing the floating cloud ceilings that go in those corridors. The picture on the right is an example of just the ceiling grid going in. So like Dawn mentioned to me, the guy that came today did four rooms, so they're pretty good, and we just got to get them here to do the work. Other pictures that are in there, it's kind of a picture of your, I think, the library area. The kitchen area there on the right, that cardboard with the red tape, that's the kitchen hood, so that has been installed. So that's an area where they're going to start getting into to frame some ceilings in the very near future. That's a good shot of your mechanical room with the switchgear. So Allegheny City Electric has been roughing in all the feeder conduit that go to those switchgear panels that go throughout the building to the rest of your distribution. They've been pulling the cable, so they're getting close to get permanent power, which would be a huge milestone for the project. Just a shot of your new lot, the new sidewalk up there along the road of the building, and an actual shot of them paving. I think that was it. There are, I think, a couple changes on the agenda that you would need to vote on. I think the first one is a deduct. We deducted the kitchen ovens from the contract. I think they were direct purchased, you saved a little money that way with the school, so that felt like something to do that would make sense. So that you'll see a pretty decent-sized deduct, and I think we saved a little bit of money on the purchase of them. The other change order on there is a, I call it a minor change from Legalia for some duck work, field condition issues that we ran into in a couple rooms with. The duck work was supposed to go through some joist spacing, but the webbing of the joist didn't really line up to go straight, and the duck work was a little too big. So after some value engineering, I think the initial change order that they proposed was under $10,000. We were able to get with them to kind of rework the location of the duck work in the room and the design team, and got it down to, I think, the value that's on your agenda, around $2,000. So just a good example, trying to work with the design team to make something fit in existing condition space.
So I think there were 545,000 total change orders so far. Is that, is that the number I saw up there? Five-something? That's before this deduction, right? So...
That should include it.
Okay.
So if you go to, if you wanted to go to the project financial status page, where I have all the charts.
Where are we on, Jack?
Uh, pay, right there. One more up. So, yeah, the approved-to-date is 545. If you go to the blue, where it says current percentage with pending value, the 2.11%, so it would go down some to the 529. So what that includes, Todd, is I have some other projected costs in that pending estimated column. So that's why it isn't really a net of 86 going from the 545.
Still a pretty good number. I mean, that's, that's not bad for a change order for this type of project, right?
Yeah, so if you look at your overall percentage to date, I guess really the chart way on the right, 2.11 isn't bad, but when you look at, like, for design-wise, air and emissions, he's not even close to even .25%. So they've done a good job. Really, the changes that have occurred are field conditions, existing conditions, and you'll run into that with renovations of buildings. And then, you know, choosing the owner to add some scope that we talked about with the access control, which wasn't exactly an owner add, but it was part of the scope that had to get paid for somewhere. So, yeah, so, yeah, globally, I think you're, financially, you're doing, you're doing well.
Yeah. Good, thank you.
So I guess, are there any questions related to those couple changes outside of what Todd asked? Okay, that's all I got. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Jason. So next up is part of my report. I think you guys have met Alex Clark last, well, June it's been. So Alex is our student representative from the high school, so welcome to August board meeting, Alex, and we'll turn it over to you.
All right, thank you. Thanks for the introduction. I was going to introduce myself. In case you weren't here at the board meeting in June, or you haven't met me yet, my name's Alex Clark, and I'm the underst, I'm the junior class president for student council up in the high school. So that means part of my job is coming here and talking to you guys and telling you everything that's going on in the high school. And, you know, school hasn't started yet, so we don't have too much stuff today, but student council sponsored the senior parking spot painting fundraising event again, and seniors were able to purchase a parking spot to decorate and then have exclusive use of the spot for their senior year. The event was well-received, and student council sold 102 spots. And if you have time, you can take a drive down to the back parking lot down there and see all of their creative designs. And then today, the school held a district-wide backpack bash to give out school supplies like backpacks, crayons, pencils, and whatever other school supplies students need for the upcoming school year. Our fall sports have started up with practices and games starting in the upcoming weeks, including the first football game of the 2025-26 school year on August 22nd with a beach theme. And a senior sunrise will be held at the football field on the first day of school, September 2nd, and the annual homecoming weekend celebration and dance is scheduled for October 11th. We will kick off the homecoming festivities with the homecoming parade before the football game on Friday, October 10th. The ceremony to crown our homecoming queen will be held during halftime of the football game. And that's all I have for you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome, Alex. Thank you very much for that report. Madam President, just a couple other things to round out my report this evening. As you can imagine, we're, it's hard to say that we're already at August 13th. The summer has been flying by, so administration, we've been getting ready for school, getting some last-minute things. We've got lots of registrations, and again, we've got some new administrative assistants and new positions, and we're working through all of that. Our administrative team's working on our professional development schedule. That's being hammered out. We're going to welcome our faculty back on August 26th, and our education foundation is going to be getting a coffee truck for us to, to celebrate with, with our teachers, so they'll be represented well on that day. Also administratively, all of our standardized testing has come in from the spring, and we've met at least twice as an administrative team looking at that data. And in the future, I'll, we'll do a thing where we can kind of show you a little bit about what that looks like when it comes into the district. It's an Excel spreadsheet that's, you know, a mile and a half long, and Emily and B J and the team have broken that down into some really useful data for, for our principals. And, you know, kicking off the school years, really, we talk a lot in the district about by name and by need, and so we're breaking that down into individual strength profiles for our students based upon how they scored on their standardized test. So as a, as a teacher coming in, you're going to have a portrait of, of the students who are sitting in front of you, where they, where they excel, where they experience some challenges. So we're meeting administratively tomorrow afternoon and Friday afternoon to finalize that and the first couple days of school. I also want to mention that on our meet-the-teacher night, it's a little different this year. I think it's from 4:30 to 8:00 P. M. here at the high school campus. As you know, we've worked with St. Vincent Prevention Projects for, since before I've been here, in terms of drug and alcohol prevention, we're going to have a mobile bedroom here on-site for our seven through 12 parents that, really for parents only, that they can tour that to kind of see where kids keep things or hide things, or some, some different signs in a child's bedroom for them to be able to look through and become, you know, better informed. So that's going to be on-site for that, for that evening, and I believe Mr. Norton, who we've worked with, again, with St. Vincent, is going to be heading that up. So we're going to be sending that out in communication so families are aware of that. Again, it's for parents only. Just to, just to give them some tips, I know we met as a board in, in June and talked about having some of these different programs and outreaches for our parents in our community to, to assist them in their parenting journey. So we're excited about, about that. I do want to mention, Alex mentioned the backpack bash today. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to get down there, but I just want to say how grateful I am to the folks in the community and everybody that was a part of that, to make something really exciting for our community, to kind of take care of back-to-school shopping and haircuts and those kinds of things. Really, that service to others is really a gift and, and really just something beautiful that, that happens here. So I just want to thank, thank everybody involved. I know Emily DePantis at Saxon has been, been in charge of that, and I hate to mention names because there are a lot of others that I don't mention, but she absolutely emailed and reached out, and it's something we've done for probably four years, three or four years now, maybe more. So appreciate that. And also, the summertime is still a time for learning for our administrative team, and we've, you know, went, went to, went to a conference to talk about, you know, how do, how do we engage our teachers and families in, in the growth of their children in terms of by name and by need? Again, I keep saying that, but that's something that's very important. And how do we take really impersonal data that comes in on a student and make that personal connection with them and make it usable? So we're excited about our professional learning teams here at Kiskey Area School District and really hitting the ground and getting that work hard. We've talked a lot administratively about maintaining that summer steam that we have and when, when teachers come back and the excitement that's involved in that, how we leverage that and how we continue that through the course of the year as we, as we grow together. So just some things about what, what we've been working on here, and I'm going to wait for Dawn to give kind of a report with the education foundation later, and maybe we'll be able to jump in and help with that. So that's all I have right now, Madam President, so I appreciate the opportunity to share a little bit.
Thank you. We do not have any citizens' comments on agenda items. No one has signed up for that. Then we will go to Mr. Ron Repat for the solicitors' report.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. No formal report. I do just want to say I, you know, had the privilege of being a speaker for our solicitors' conference where, you know, I spoke on healthcare, labor bargaining, and, you know, a lot of the schools, because it's solicitors from everywhere, right? We're talking about, and Ms. Tully was there with me as well, and we're talking to, you know, Bucks County, Erie County, Allegheny, I mean, they're, they're solicitors from all over the Commonwealth, and they're all seeing the same issues. You know, healthcare is just going through the roof. Right now, they're just seeing double-digit increases, so, you know, it's something that we're certainly keeping our eye on and watching about how we're going to kind of tackle that, that monster of healthcare, because it's going to get here when we have to start going through the labor negotiations. The other thing that I want to say to, you know, to the board is hearing some of the, and, you know, I won't say names, but hearing some of the horror stories of some of the, some of the districts that we were talking to, some of the solicitors about, you know, the board members who are yelling and screaming at each other, and, you know, some of those things. And, you know, I will say, you know, I had the pleasure of serving on the board for quite some time, and, you know, you guys have disagreed, but you do so professionally, so I don't think that goes without notice to, to the community. And, you know, I think for, for me, I want to say thanks, because, like I said, when they're telling me some of these stories, and they're, you know, some of the bigger cities, you know, near Philadelphia County and things like that, but, you know, some of those stories, and you realize, you know, how, how real professional, you know, we are here at Kiskey, so I appreciate that. That's all I have, Madam President. I did want to just give an update on executive session. We did have an executive session from 5:30 to 7:00 this morning, or this evening. We're talking about personnel matters, legal updates, safety and security concerns, and what else?
Track.
Oh, yeah, and then the, the issue that we had, yeah, legal issue we had regarding track and field issue, which I can, I can talk about a little later when we get to that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Next up, we have board representative reports. Northern Westmoreland Career and Technical Center.
So there was no meeting in July. We'll have a meeting next week, so we'll report in September.
Thank you. Jenna, with the Westmoreland County Intermediate Unit?
Yes, first day of school age programs are going to start for the W I U on 8/20, and then our next meeting is on 8/26. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kulikowski, the Pennsylvania School Board Legislative Council.
So obviously, the big thing right now is that P A's budget is still not passed and ready, so that hinges a lot of dispersment and funding for a lot of different programs. And the other couple hot topics that are, is kind of on everyone's radar, is artificial intelligence and cellphone use. And right now, there are five states that have released K to 12 guidance for artificial intelligence use. P A is not one of them. And also, there are 26 states that have laws restricting student access to cellphones. Again, P A is currently not one of them, so just some things that we're going to have to keep on our radar as a district.
Thank you. Ms. Millinger for the Kiskey Area Education Foundation.
Okay, so there's a lot going on with the education foundation. The last time we met in person was July 15th. At that time, the education foundation voted to donate $5,000 to East Primary. The sunshade, that idea has been scrapped, but they are building a 40-by-20 pavilion that will be built on the southeast side of the playground area. They had raised $7,000 from the bunny run. They received $2,000 from local businesses, and then the education foundation was funding the rest of it. There will be basketball hoops that crank to adjust heights for the little ones up to fourth graders. They are putting together a little group to kind of gather a grand total for scholarships, teacher grants, and major improvement projects since the beginning of the foundation, so we'll wait and see where we get with that. They were approved to be involved in a program. It's called E I T C. It's a tax credit, basically allowing companies to invest or support educational programs in return for state grants or state tax reductions. Rick can elaborate a little more if he wanted to on that one. On Monday, the 11th, they had the 17th Annual Jeff McFus Golf Outing. It went very well. It was very well-attended. They had 120 golfers participating, and when I talked to Diane Haney earlier, they were still working on totals. They're working on new flyers for the towel project. The first set have gone up. They're doing them in sets of 25, and right now, they're at 18 of 25 for the second set. So I guess we have to wait for new flyers with all that. Yours should be up.
That's another question.
Yeah. Not really education foundation-related, but the Kiskey Area Sports Hall of Fame will induct their, or introduce their inductees during halftime of the first football game, which is on the 22nd. They are also hosting a banquet on August 30th that will be at the Greek Orthodox Social Hall in Oakmont, and our very own Tony Ganello will be awarded the William K. Miller Community Service Award. Tickets are still available for that. They're $40 apiece. If anybody wants to attend, you can reach out to Mr. Nicholas. I have his phone number. If anybody wants it, contact me at the end of the meeting. And other than that, like Jason said, they're working on getting a coffee truck for the kickoff, which will be on the 26th, and the next meeting is scheduled for September 9th.
Oh, lots going on there.
Lots.
Thank you. Any committee reports? Can I get them? Okay, um, reports to the board. We are going to be voting on our financial reports, our cash summary. We're going to be reviewing the school and department reports, as well as our change order summaries that we're just talked about. Any questions on, on any of the reports to the board? We are also going to be asking for approval of the minutes from our... We are also going to be asking for approval of the minutes from our June meeting. Dr. Laura, any communications? Old business?
No.
And moving on to personnel, we have a lot of different personnel matters from some resignations to some new hires. So we are going to be looking at that. These are a lot of the things that we talked about in executive session. You can review those, you know, as they are listed. Is this where we, you want to talk the school nurse situation?
Yeah, just again, Mr. Repack and I were kind of talking a little bit back and forth. So just to remind as.
10.8.
Yes. Thank you. That resignation of the school nurse, as you recall, back in June, because of, you know, the market is so competitive in some teaching positions as well as the nursing physicians, you gave administration the authority to, you know, extend offers of employment per the resolution 1019 from June 18th in consultation with the board president and the personnel committee chair, which was Dr. Halter and Mrs. Snyder. So in the interim, there were some folks that we interviewed that we extended employment to based on that process that they had either, well, they just chose to resign for a personal reason or for, you know, financial reasons or what have you. And so you'll approve based on the resolution 618. And then that resignation for 10.8 is actually going to be ending that employment. And then you'll see later that we, there will be a school nurse that's recommended to fill that position. So just so everybody's aware of why that is the way that it is on the agenda. And so we talked about maybe a little better way to do that moving forward. But this will absolutely work this, you know, on Monday.
And is that the same, is that the same situation that's at 10.10? The resignation of special education teacher?
No, she was with us last year and she has taken another position outside of there. So on tomorrow, based on our conversation in executive session, these placeholders will be filled with names. And then there will also appear a administrative assistant position at North Primary, which we discussed. So there will be an additional agenda item added tomorrow for your consideration on Monday.
Thank you. So as you can see, personnel for days here, so all through the 10s. If anyone, you know, has anything they'd like to discuss about that or any questions, that's all that's happening there in personnel. Lots of, lots of moving and shaking going on there. This leads us to finance, looking at the different service agreements that we have from 11.1 all the way to 11.7. So it takes some time to look at the different agreements that we are going to be voting on.
Madam President, if I may, on 11.7, so this is a unique opportunity for the board. So the board is looking at replacing the track and improving that area up to including potentially the javelin runway area and the subsurface area. Instead of going out for traditional bids where you put out advertisements once a week for three consecutive weeks through the procurement code, the board elected to look at the cooperative, whether it be KPN or Co-Stars. So what that gives the opportunity for is you get a bunch of different companies that have put into Co-Stars and bid on the projects. But you're able to actually negotiate those contracts and try to get the best price, the best cost because they're part of a global procurement in, again, throughout the whole Commonwealth potentially, throughout the United States depending upon what the territory is. So we just received a bid, but it was too late to take this off the agenda for a lower amount. So we are going to be looking at Monday, potentially putting a lower amount bid in there that we were able to do. It saves the taxpayer dollars, or taxpayer dollars. So again, that's going to be the recommendation from the administration. But it is just a little unique because there's an agenda item that shows up and we may have to revamp and change that up. But the reason why we're able to do so is because it's not a sealed bid. We open and we have to take the lowest. We have the opportunity to negotiate that. So again, a little unique, but that is why, if you see a change, that's why it would be recommended by administration on Monday.
Thank you for explaining that.
Any questions on that? I guess I would add, that's the track, the pole vault, that's everything, is what it is.
Okay, thank you. Moving on from there, we have legislation. We have the 2025-2026 Student Handbook as well as two service agreements that we will be voting on. From there, we're going to be looking at the bills from the general fund, food service payments as well as capital project payments. If there's anything in there that you would like to discuss? Okay, moving on to student activities. We're going to be looking at some hiring of some coaching, athletic supplemental positions as well as game and event workers, land volunteers, as well as the winter guard trip. Now moving on to 15, curriculum and professional development and assessment list. We're going to be asked to look at that through curriculum. And 16.1 and 2 are the change orders that have come in. Citizens comments on non-agenda items. No one has signed up this evening. If anybody is wanting to speak, you certainly can. Okay, so this leaves us with our closing and our director's comments. I want to start with Mrs. Culp.
I'd like to welcome all the teachers and students back to 2025, or 2025-2026 year. And I hope everybody had a great summer.
Mrs. Snyder?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Mr. Shaner?
Mr. Sterling? I just want to commend the education foundation for getting approved for education improvement tax credit program in the state of Pennsylvania. And I want to encourage businesses to contact them and take advantage of it. You can take some of your state tax money that you pay as a business and you could divert it directly to the education foundation and they can use that money to benefit our district. So, you know, it doesn't cost the business anything. It's taxed, you're paying anyway. So, you know, businesses, please take a look at it. And hopefully, you know, the education foundation will get some things out there on social media, too.
Thank you. Thank you. Mrs. Mellinger?
Yeah, they were working on redoing or revamping their website with all that stuff. The only other thing I wanted to say regarding the pavilion at East, that will also serve as an outdoor classroom for like science classes that could get messy or whatever, but they will have use of that as well. Just looking forward to the new school year and goodbye.
Thank you. Mrs. Kammer?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Mrs. Kulikowski?
Nothing this evening.
Mrs. Ralph? Dr. Laura? It just totally went blank.
I'm going to sit here for, you know, that.
Five hours, I'm sorry.
It happens. No, appreciate that. I did send the board some information last week about the Pennsylvania Youth Survey. And I want to, it's basically a survey distributed in Pennsylvania to school students to talk about trends and their feelings and attitudes towards alcohol, drugs, bullying types of behavior. So I did send some links to you guys just for information if you'd like to look at that and read it and give me some feedback in terms of your thoughts. If it's something that you might like to hear some more information about, I can absolutely get some folks from St. Vincent Prevention Projects out here to get in front of you. It is completely voluntary. In other words, it's, children don't have to take it. Parents can opt out. And even students, if they come to school and say, I don't want to take it that day, they can absolutely not participate in that. So it's not something that kids are held captive that they have to participate in or not. And I know that was an absolute, you know, concern of this board last year with some other stuff that we did. It does help with funding. Funding is being cut in all different kinds of places. And this opens up some funding through the Westmoreland Drug and Alcohol Commission. And that also opens up some opportunities for us in prevention projects. Like we're getting a drug and alcohol, drug counselor, Darren, is that right, this year, a liaison? Yes. To help with our students as well as, you know, really the prevention and the stopping of use of vapes and those kinds of things that we see in high school. They're able to run some different groups in lieu of, you know, filing charges at the magistrate and punishing them that way rather than really, really giving them in there. So again, before I take any steps further to pursue that, if you guys wouldn't mind, shoot me an email after you look at it. There's a website through the Commonwealth. If you Google Pennsylvania Youth Survey, there's sample questions. There's some data there to look at, you know, for our community as well to look at. So I want to be as open and transparent as possible on that. And then if we're okay to move forward to that, then I'll absolutely pursue it. But I just would like to thank you for your consideration of looking at that, so. But again, welcome back. We're ready to rock and roll.
Again, welcome back to teachers, administrators. It sounds like it's been a really good summer. A lot of good things are happening, getting ready for the school district to start to operate again. I know our football team has a scrimmage on Saturday against Connelsville here at home. Really excited for the football season, come out and support the new coach and some of the kids. I know I have a freshman now, so I'm like, oh, football, you know, that's really exciting. But yeah, I just appreciate everyone's work, our willingness to kind of get together at different times and get, as a board, to get ready for the 2025-2026 school year. So thank you all for that. And now can we have a motion to adjourn?
So move. Second.
All in favor?